Give about twenty more seconds and we'll get started. All right, those twenty seconds are up. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Erin, would you mind taking the roll, please?
Sure.
Councilmember Dietrich.
Here.
Councilmember Pointer.
Here.
Councilmember Scherbering.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here. Okay, we're gonna start our meeting off with some fun things here. We're gonna take care of one award here, and when Chief Davis gets here, we'll be doing... Oh, he got here. He walked in and I didn't even see him. Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, we are doing a Nice Neighbor Award to Mr. Joe Davis. And Councilmember Dietrich actually is the one who recommended you for this award, so I'm going to let him do the presentation. You'll do fine.
So this is a Nice Neighbor Award. The City of Manchester is recognizing Joe Davis in recognition of his acts and kindness without seeking or receiving recognition. Joe has gone above and beyond by demonstrating dedication and commitment to the City of Manchester and its citizens. Joe routinely picks up trash and debris from the parking lots, city parks, and anywhere along his drumroll, helping to make our community a cleaner, healthier, and better place to live. We are deeply grateful for his efforts and hope his actions continue to inspire others to take pride in our shared environment.
Yeah, can I have a second? Please go, sir.
I'm trying to be on this one here. There you go. All right. I hope his acts inspire everybody to do what he does for us, so you don't have so much to pick up.
Yeah, all right.
It would be very nice, though.
I don't get bored all the time.
We sure appreciate that, so congratulations.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Great. Next, Chief David has some letters of commendation that he'd like to present.
All right. Mayor and City Council, I'm about six months in. I've been paying a real close attention to the officers, and first and foremost, I'm extremely proud of all the officers that we employ in the City of Manchester. Change is a very difficult thing. For law enforcement officers, we tend to be a little robotic. So me coming in here and kind of making some changes, all the officers have done very well, and I think they're very happy. But there's two standouts that I want to present some awards today. After about six months since, the first one, Officer Nick Hall, can come up here, buddy?
Today, I am writing and recognizing Officer Nicholas Hall for a letter of commendation and recognition of their active performance. Since my appointment as the Chief of Police to Manchester Police Department, all the officers have embraced the changes and direction I decided to move towards. The department has encountered some unique challenges upon them, and Officer Nick Hall stepped up his ability to promote unity and expertise in all the duties. Even though Officer Hall is relatively young in his time in service, his dedication to OWI enforcement provided measures should not go unnoticed. Officer Hall's challenges has had his challenges during times of short staffing, being assaulted, spent on, high-stress calls, and continue to excel in the face of adversity. Many of these items may seem routine for a peace officer in today's world, but no officer willingly invites this behavior to the forefront of their duties. Officer Hall has maintained a professional image in this department throughout some challenging times and continues to sharpen his craft in the process. His positive attitude and willingness to go above and beyond made him a valuable member to the Manchester Police Department. For these reasons, I would like to present Officer Nick Hall with a letter of commendation for their exceptional performance and dedication deserved to be formally recognized.
Second Sergeant David Trumbly.
He's a shy guy.
Don't make him ask all.
So today, I'm also writing and approving Sergeant David Trumbly for a letter of commendation and recognition of his leadership and performance. So again, since my appointment Chief of Police to Manchester Police Department, the leadership team has been instrumental in my immediate success. Change is often difficult for law enforcement officers, but having a group of department leaders to embrace those changes made by transition almost effortless. Sergeant Trumbly has spent countless hours assisting with digitalizing and revamping our department's policies and procedures. He has also garnered input from the officers, working closely with myself and Captain Wright, bringing our policies up to date into a new era of 21st century policing. Sergeant Trumbly has also worked countless shifts covering for injury or officer needs and embracing the burden of ensuring our community's safety with continued 24-hour coverage. Sergeant Trumbly is often the first to arrive and last to leave in almost every facet of department operations. He's looked upon for his guidance by his peers and excels at making progressive decisions for the department. His drive for continued excellence and willingness to put others before himself makes him an extremely important component of the leadership team I have working by side with me. For these reasons, I am presenting Sergeant David Trumbly with a letter of commendation.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations, gentlemen. Okay, next, are there any changes to the agenda or any items that we need to move or anything?
Any corrections or changes?
Nothing. Okay, I take a motion to approve the agenda. I move to approve the agenda.
I'm sorry, man.
All right. Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yeah.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay. Next is our public input period. Um, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record before proceeding with any comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Ultans Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action on any comments given during the public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the council? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the public input period, and before we go on to the consent agenda, we have a student with us tonight. Would you like to stand and tell us your name and where you go to school and what your plans are for after graduation, because I take this government class we're here for?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Callie Sherman, and I'm from Utsukannon, and next year I plan to go to Iowa State for engineering.
Good for you. Which form of engineering, mechanical?
I would like to do aerospace engineering.
Wow, good for you. Well, Will, do you have to ask questions tonight?
Um, yeah.
Okay, we'll give you time at the end of the meeting, okay? All right, you're welcome. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. First, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the October 28th City Council meeting. Did I miss something?
We back up and do that one first on the public hearing. Don't just skip the second part of that?
No, no, we were on...
Public input.
Public input. Oh, public input, I'm sorry.
Yeah. All right, like, motion to approve the minutes from the October 28th Council meeting and the November 4th Committee as a whole meeting minutes. I need a motion to adopt Resolution 114, and that's approving the bills and the expense reports. Next, I need a motion to approve the liquor license for Franklin Street Brewery. Next, I need a motion to approve the payment to Ferg Ram in the amount of $12,427, and that covers construction services, both administrative and certified project representation. And that is for the 2024 Street improvement project on East Main. I need a motion to approve pay estimate number three in the amount of $132,622.28 to Chick-fry Escavating for the Commerce Court... I said that wrong. Commerce Court Street Extension Project. Next, I need a motion to approve the receipt of unpaid nuisance mowing fees, and I believe you have a list of those properties there for you to look at. Need a motion to adopt Resolution 115, setting the date for a public hearing on our urban renewal plan amendment for the City of Manchester. And then I need a motion to approve the appointment of Ron Mortison to the Board of Adjustments. He's replacing Andrew Schmidt. Need a motion to proceed with a second consideration and adoption of Ordinance 16, and that's our noise control. We went through that last meeting as well. Then I need a motion to proceed with a second consideration and adoption of Ordinance 17, and that is in regard to parking regulations. I'll take a motion in a second, and then we can open it up for any discussion.
I'm making a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. How many more pay estimates will we be paying Chick-fry for Commerce Court?
Jason, should be one more.
One more?
Yeah, we'll have a final quantity adjustment, change order, and pay application. And then there'll be two more, because I have the retention one that will come after acceptance of the project. That'll be very small.
Okay, and then one more question about the unpaid mowing fees discussion. Sandra Duncan has passed away. She's been out there for how many times? What's ever been happening?
We... Hopefully, when the property gets sold, then those will go along with whoever purchases the property. Even though she has passed away, it is still listed under her name, and so we have to continue to send the bills that way.
That was a property that burned, caught fire, and so they did tear it down and make insurance. But now it's an abandoned property or abandoned lot, but because there's not a house on it, I'm not sure we can go after Chapter 657A. It's an abandoned property because there's not a house on it.
Okay.
So that's something we'll have Jim look into a little bit, but that's... Right now, we are doing the snow removal, so this winter we'll be renewing the snow off of it, or should we do it in the morning?
And there's not like an extra can or nothing, no?
Nobody has expressed any interest, otherwise there would have been an estate or something put together.
Some type of bank on it, basically?
Nobody. Now, under her...
Still under her own? Wow, thank you. Any further questions or comments? All right, Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
All right, so we have a public hearing tonight, and I'm opening a public hearing at 5:12. And this is on the application for a combination of adjoining lots pursuant to City Code Section 170.36. And this is Andy Chase and Cynthia Jacobson. They want to combine their lots that they locally... Or they own both of them at 104 Crescent Drive. They want to have those combined to be considered as a single lot for zoning purposes. Do you want to speak to this, Tim?
This is the inaugural test on this ordinance that we adopted at the last meeting. I don't see any reason why we would not allow this to be combined, allow them to build a garage on that. It's considered to be one zoning lot at that time. I think it clears it up, so that way, even though there's a structure built on there, then they can't split that lot without going through the subdivision ordinance again.
This is a public hearing, so if there's any comments from the public, now's the time to speak up. Hearing done. At 5:13, we're going to close the public hearing. And before you, I need a motion to adopt Resolution 116 to approve the combination of adjoining lots under common ownership for 100 Crescent Drive and 104 Crescent Drive.
So moved.
I'll give it to Bill if that's okay. Take care. All right. All right. Any further questions or comments? Mary Ann?
These two people are, like, they're on a date together, correct?
Yes.
I'm just...
The names are... For their own...
Okay, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
First item on our regular agenda, we have a request from Scott and Sarah Hermanson. They're requesting permission to bo-hunt at their property at 413 South Wayne Street, an adjacent property owned by them. We've been in contact with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources regarding the toll the deer have had on their family farm. And the DNR has authorized a number of depredation tags to both of them, to you guys, okay? To thin the herd and reduce the damage to their crops. You want to talk to us more about what you're kind of thinking?
Love to talk about it.
Okay.
And I didn't, of course, bring enough copies for everybody, so maybe you guys can scooch together and share.
Or I can make copies.
We can scooch together.
They're just my talking points, so everything that's on there, I'll just go over here and share. So Scott Hermanson, 413 South Wayne Street, Manchester. So every year, every year we have damage at the farm. We kind of planned for it. This year, this year's damage was just dramatically increased. We had over 20% damage to corn. I was actually trying to get the... We just had it harvested yesterday, so I was trying to get the total percentage of acres planted versus yield. So a little bit over 20% of corn. We had about 25 to 30% damage from our pumpkin crop. So we actually had to go out to market, purchase pumpkins to kind of finish the season. So we tried several different ways to keep the deer away from the crops, and to this point, nothing has really worked effectively. And so my grammar is horrible there, so I take ownership of the effective. After receiving guidance from the Iowa DNR about the increase in damage and financial impact due to the growing deer population, they kind of define that management in three different ways. One of them is fencing. The other one's what they call hazing. The third one is depredation. So fencing is only effective if it's an eight-foot tall fence or electrified fence. Extremely financially, this, it wouldn't work for our needs. We did a quick estimate. It was probably about $25, a little over $25,000. And then every year, because we rotate crops, we'd have to move it, so it'd only be effective for a season. The other one is hazing. Now, we do this. We literally do this daily. We walk my dog twice a day. My dog is an effective deterrent, as well as we drive our side-by-side around to try and push him off. But they're unaffected by that. All they do is they go over to our set-aside area, they watch us go by, and then they go back to their normal activities. The third one is a depredation control. And so the depredation is basically hunting a portion of the population to thin the herd and help to build fear of us humans. And to this point, they've completely lost fear and their natural fear of us, right? So they just kind of just, they just let us kind of go, and then they go back to their normal thing. So the depredation helps to kind of reinvigorate that fear, that natural fear that they have. This activity is absolutely not a cure. You know, and the best way to probably put it is a management activity to help control the growing deer population in the city and also help control the spread of several chronic diseases that are spreading in the deer population. Tangentially, the DNR talked about that they haven't been able to get good test samples from this area just because nobody's participating in that program that helped test. Clayton County was one of the first counties to get widespread chronic wasting disease, and so they're looking for it here in Manchester. And so we've been partnering. They've come out and looked at it. They verified the issue. So we're partnering with the DNR so that they can help to test the deer, to be a part of this program, and just to see if it's really truly effective for us. So what we're proposing to do is just conduct a very precise archery-only hunt within the center of the 20 acres that we own. This would... It's divided by four specific weekends where we would allow four vetted proficient hunters to hunt, or archers to hunt. These hunters would have to follow all Iowa hunting rules and regulations. We're also participating in a program, and this is... I've done this before, but there's actually another, a second program that the DNR asked us to participate in. One of them is Hush. That program is where if you have a deer in there, a participating locker nearby, you can take the deer there. They will process it for free, and they'll give it to a food bank. The other one is called the Deer Exchange. People who are disabled or disadvantaged that they can't hunt, we can sign up for that and literally then give them that deer. So just really two really great, helpful programs. This is obviously not going to fix anything. This is an activity, a management activity, where we can help to just help the deer to be a little bit more weary. And one other thing that I'll just note here is that, in my last statement, it's just like, we told that this effort also lessens the accidents on Bailey Drive. And so one of the things that we try and be very cautious of is that when we do our hazing activity, and just my dog running, will push the deer out. And two weeks ago, actually right after the DNR visited, there was two deer that ran out right across where the new dog park is going to go, and someone hit the deer, and it just spun around. It walked around in circles. And so this is a common activity. This happens all the time. So the hazing is not effective. It's dangerous. It's just... And so there's just got to be better ways that we can do. So I've included in this, I just want to make sure that these are the four targeted weekends that we are talking about. Now, they're targeted doesn't mean that they're perfect, and there's something that we need to move around. We absolutely can. And you'll notice there's a gap in December, and the gap is because Iowa does not allow any type of archery hunt in the first full weekend, in the second and third full weekend of December because of the shotgun season. So that's why there's that gap there. And the four archers I have down here are Bob Murphy, Todd Keel, Riley Hermanson, and myself. All four people have varying degrees of proficiency. I trust them, and then they are going to qualify. One of the things that we said when we were talking about doing this is that we're going to have them qualify. Just make sure that you can hit a pie plate at 30 yards, because that is a state... When I did state hunts in parks, that was a qualification for it. So that's where we're at.
Do they do this every year? I mean, do you have to reapply for the depredation tag every year?
So the DNR, yeah, so yes. So the answer to that is yes. They are going to watch this closely to be like, hey, this really didn't work. Let's try something different. They're looking into other things that we could do, if there's any type of grants or stuff to help with fencing or something like that. But they were very open about fencing has to be very, very specific to control deer. The electrified one is then, it has to be electrified, and you have to put baits on it to make sure that the deer learn that the fence is danger, you know? So they're going to, we're going to have a consistent, like, check-in. And based on the outcome of this, we are going to start doing some check-ins, just like, hey, they're going to start stopping by, just making sure that if there's anything else that they can do, what we should do, that sort of thing.
You kind of have a unique situation where you're located in town, right in the center of a lot of residential...
Exactly, exactly.
Things, so...
Yeah. So and one of our biggest concerns, and I'm sure that is one of your biggest concerns, is a wounded deer. And this is why I mentioned that we will do this in the center. So if you had an aerial picture of our property, we have about 25, 26 acres. That's all set aside. It's all wooded and set aside. So deer's natural inclination when they're wounded is to run to an area where they can hide and to rest. And we are, being that we're all proficient hunters, we know that. Let them go do that. That's the goal. That's the target of what we want to do. But the reality is, is that nothing is perfect. If there's a chance that something happens, then that's when I have to probably go talk to the neighbor and call them and say, hey, dude, I got to go talk to this person. And so that's, there's a chance of that, and I'm not saying that this is perfect, by any means.
How many tags do you have, the hunters have?
So the DNR has given me 10 depredation tags. So the, but as an archer, but as a hunter in the state of Iowa, I have the opportunity to get my own tag, plus a landowner tag, plus those depredations. So the amount could be 14. And to the DNR's point is, they have, they have producers, is what I would be called. They have producers that can get up to 30 tags. Now, that's, I don't think that's realistic for what we have in mind here. We're talking about a targeted view to re-instill that fear.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I guess my other question would be, is this something, I mean, we just do it year to year. I mean, it's an approval from year to year is what it would be.
I understand that. This was a one-year thing, and that next year, you know, 2025, would be the same, the same thing, same discussion.
Ben, do you have any concerns?
No, Scott came down, talked to me and Tim. We kind of ironed out all those concerns. You know, I will say that the way karma works, I mean, literally two days after that, I had a call about a deer at somebody's property that wasn't moving, and called the DNR, and they actually were very interested because it did appear to have some of the diseases that had been going around this area. So the DNR is interested. I mean, it's not just affecting, and now it's now affecting, you know, normal property owners. I mean, so I, with it being a year, you know, like I told them, we can try it this year, iron out how it happens, if there is concerns. You know, it's more important for us just to get the approval. That way, if one of the officers know, you know, if a deer does that in somebody's property, again, I trust Scott enough that he'll come take care of it and things. We can help with that too. So I really don't have too many concerns on this going around, and we can kind of see how it plays out.
Sure.
And any thing that you guys harvest, you're going to have the DNR test, then?
Yeah, yeah.
That is...
Yeah, and that's honestly, we would like to do that. One of the things that's happened is this blue-tongued disease that's happened in the deer. It affects cattle. And so it doesn't necessarily always kill them, but it affects their ability to be sold at market. So it's a huge financial impact to some of the adjacent cattle farmers. So I wanted to help them out in whatever way we could with this.
Any other questions with Scott?
I understand that this is a financial thing for your business and so on. I will tell you right now, I'm going to go against it, and the reason is because I've had a deer that was shot in my yard. Now, if you know where I live, in the middle of Manchester, it made it that far. So they don't always drop right away, and this one was shot with a gun. I just, I don't want some kid to come across the dead deer. I don't like the fact that you are so close to a walking trail on two sides. That really bothers me in in terms of where you are in relationship to where you would be hunting. Dog park's going to be right across the road from you. It's all of those things are concerning to me. I don't have a problem hunting. I think it's wonderful if you can do something for the DNR. You know, I approve of all those kinds of things. If you were further out, not backing houses, not backing our walking trail, not facing our dog park, all those kinds of things, I would say, fine, because I know that we have to get rid of some of our deer. Unfortunately, we have too many, but I can't do it in town, so...
I respect your opinion, absolutely.
I just want you to know why it is that I believe this. I've had people who live close to where you live that have told me, uh-uh. They don't want to be part of it. So just wanted to let you know. I want to be honest with you.
Why? Why? Well, it's a fair fight. That's totally understandable.
Any other questions for Scott or comment? Okay, thank you, Scott.
You're fine.
What, yeah?
We need approval.
I know.
Okay.
I think you should...
I was going to have a seat, so somebody can make a motion. Thank you for taking care of it. I appreciate it.
I'm making a motion to approve, man.
Okay.
Second.
I would just ask clarification. The motion is to approve the four weekends listed and the four hunters listed in the letter.
Correct.
I'll make sure that's spelled out.
Also a one-year trial.
Yeah, correct.
And then if you could let Tim know how successful you were after the four weeks, I'd be kind of curious to see. Or Ben.
Somebody, just, you know, that way it could get back to us to kind of let us know, like, hey, you know, we got this many or what, you know?
Absolutely.
We'll update the council to see what happened.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
No.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Next, before us, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 17, and that's approving the engineering agreement with Burnton Group for the Grand Avenue Trail Extension Project. Do you want to speak to this, Tim?
Yeah, just a reminder, we have been awarded a TAP grant for the Grand Avenue Trail Extension, an amount of $200,000. The grant is not for engineering. That was not what it was applied for. So fees for engineering is not covered under our grant for the match, but we do use local auction sales tax funds that is dedicated to trails. as part of our funding for this. We have funding for it under a local option sales tax and that was budgeted for.
So what is the total amount of money that we are going to try to invest in this project? Besides the TAP?
The, the estimate right now, I think we have that in there.
Eighty-three or something.
Yeah, the larger cost, we do engineering is two or three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. If you subtract the two hundred and fifty thousand from that, that'd be a hundred and thirty-three thousand. That would come from local option sales tax.
Okay, I actually think I might bring that first before we do any more anything. Fifty thousand dollars was taken from the sewer plant to pay off towards Grand Avenue. Hundred and ten thousand dollars from the street improvement fund was spent on Grand Avenue and there were street improvements that needed to be done, but we've come up with a new street and now another street to maintain. And another thing, we spent, we spent more than three, four, three quarters of a million on Grand Avenue Street before we put up the Grand Avenue Extension Trail. We actually had to put the street in before we put the trail in because we had a grant. And I was voted to cut spending and watched it online. Many citizens have called me and they're concerned about some of the spending we're doing, so just out of, so I come in, so. Any other questions for Tim?
I have a question for you, Tim. What is our, what's our current city code right now for railways? Do we have to have sidewalks?
As part of the ADA transition plan, we are required to have some sort of pedestrian crap being trail or sidewalk. So either it's a five-foot wide sidewalk, according to our orders that we installed. Because this is funded with DOT funds. It's a ten-foot wide trail, not an eight-foot wide that we typically put in.
So when we do new street, we do have to do the sidewalk?
We have to put sidewalk in. I separated the trail from the street because the trail was DOT funded, which has different requirements than the local, the streets. We kept some of that funding away from there. So we didn't have those expenditures. The trail will tie into Fairview Drive, which provides sidewalk access for the people that live in that subdivision down to the trail on Lake Acre Street without having to go to North Franklin, take the sidewalk from North Franklin down to Acres and then back to the school. This will provide them with an alternate route for kids and non-motorized traffic to get to that subdivision and even into the North Town subdivision. Because I understand there's a path being worn through between a couple houses as they were cutting across there.
But they're excited that a sidewalk will go in. I mean, they really are excited that a sidewalk will go in.
I have no comment. I actually sat out there tonight after school and I saw no children whatsoever walking down the street, walking between fairgrounds and we've got two or three cars and cutting my kids in. So as for the kids using it, I think a lot of parents pick up the kids from school. They are doing all this walking back and forth like you said. In the summer months and when it's warmer out, they probably are. I mean, today's not a good day to.
I wouldn't let my kids walk home and it was only an aisle from school, but I wouldn't let my kids back home.
I just think it happens more often than anything. And part of it is there's not a sidewalk there yet for them to walk on it, so. Well, they're walking between red fairgrounds and that was okay, but now we have to have sidewalk. It's just. Well, we're trying to keep them off North Franklin though, is part of it, so.
As far as the project goes, it's, is there gonna be anything coming from the Delaware County Dirt Board?
No.
Okay.
They provided us with the land in the past.
I just wanted to make sure.
And then again, a part of this did happen to the purpose and that was extending our detention base up there, providing more storage capacity.
I think I knew that they were, their portion of the land aspect of it. I just wanted to make sure I didn't forget that.
So the only taxes will be the local option.
Option sales tax. That's correct.
Okay. And that would be the difference of the two hundred and fifty thousand. Cause I was not in favor of the Grand Avenue project when that started. I thought it was a, a street that could have waited, you know, more of a want than a need.
A homeowner that lives on the end of Fairview, his comment that her water tastes a lot better. And I'm sure it's probably because it's not a dead end anymore, you know, that it's looped. She's seen an increase in her pressure in water, which is canceled, so. Now, to me, I think it's any way you can try to improve things, not leave a bunch of chemicals at the end of a dead-end hydrant. Safety perspective, if something ever goes wrong where we need to get a fire truck back that way, we get a fire truck back that way in case of, there's just more to it as far as an emergency situation than not.
It's a lot of money though for.
It is.
For, for having emergency access and also being able to have a few people cause.
Yes, two people and their house gets blown away in a tornado and we can't get to the fire truck. I guess that's not that important. But to me, as a retired farmer, I think it is very important. Some people it's not, but to me it is.
Another aspect I think about is too is Fairview, coming in out of the fairgrounds. Having that road there, I enjoy having that there this year. Now, if we could get people to get off the road when you're coming out of there and you have a sidewalk to walk on, it might be beneficial. Just another scenario.
Oh, the camping they have up there during the summer months as well.
I make a motion to adopt, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I'm really excited to have it for the kids. I, I do think the kids will walk to school and ride their bikes to school. If you go up there and look at the bike rack in front of that school, it's packed. And it's better to have the kids on a trail than it is standing driving right down Franklin Street. I just, I just really appreciate the fact that we're putting this in for those kids.
Bill? I'm sorry.
I just, the way I look at it is, is what the city code being weighted, we put a road in to have the sidewalk there to make it match everything else. Otherwise, I feel like if we do not pass this trail, I understand it's a little pricey, but if we don't pass this, then we kinda make it sound like the city can do what they want. But if you build a new house, you better put a sidewalk in front of your house. That's just the way I kinda look at it.
And you have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that's gonna go towards it, which is gonna help offset some of it.
Right. It's not like we're.
Okay, Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Linda?
No.
Brian?
No.
Next, I need a motion for, to adopt resolution one eighteen and that's approving the change order number three for the twenty twenty-four East Main Project. And that is a decrease the contract price by a hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents to one million, two hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-seven cents. And this order is a result of a final adjustment on quantities based on actual field measurements. Is that correct? Is that right? If you want to speak to that?
Yeah, yeah. So I touched on some of the stuff a little bit last, or maybe a couple meetings ago. So there's just something we kinda overestimated. I know a big thing, I think a lot of sanitary sewers came, sewer services came under. Were able to save a portion kinda between Bailey Drive and Anderson Street that we didn't end up pouring out as much because the base was in pretty good condition. So we saved a little bit on excavation and rock. So like I say, yeah, it's just, just kinda balancing out quantity. Something we're kinda overestimated. Something we were able to kinda work around, make some changes to cut some of that cost. So it, say, everything came under, under that bid amount by almost eighty-four thousand dollars. And you know, that was after two, you know, you guys showed, to kinda do some more stuff with storm sewer that was not perceived at the start that we had a hefty change order at the beginning, but at least all said and done, things came, came under that bid, bid amount, so.
That's awesome.
Any other questions for me? I'll give a more of an update on the project or engineering updates later, but.
Thanks. All right.
I'm ready for approval of resolution one eighteen.
I'll second that. Any other questions for comments? Marion?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All right. Next, I need a motion to approve the sale of the two thousand seven Chevy Silverado C one, C fifteen hundred extended cab to Greg Balls for two thousand and three dollars. Do you want to speak to this, Tim? Two thousand and fifty-three dollars. Is it two thousand and three or two thousand and fifty-three? Okay, over here is three, okay.
It is a three dollars.
No, it's two thousand and fifty-three that we got from Greg Balls. We had another bid. There were only two bids received. The other bid came from a company out of Ohio and they bid one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighteen cents.
Okay.
So it was by sealed bid and the bids were due on Wednesday, November sixth, so that's.
So do we want to put some out there? It's on here.
The agenda amounts is two thousand, two thousand and three dollars.
Yeah.
Two thousand and fifty-three.
It's two thousand and fifty-three.
So we only, we only received two people bidding on it? And we're taking.
Sealed bid.
Yeah. And we're taking the highest bidder.
Highest bidder.
I move that we approve this name of the two thousand seven Chevy Silverado.
I'll second it.
For two thousand, two thousand and fifty-three dollars.
Three dollars, yes. All right, Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
All right. Next then, I need a motion to award the, following contract to Mark Fink for the new sidewalk snow removal with a bid of three hundred and ninety-five dollars per time and nuisance sidewalk snow removal with a bid of fifty dollars per sidewalk. And I believe we have three bids. Is that correct, Tim?
We received three quotes to do so and Mr. Fink was the lowest one.
So retain a motion and a second for that.
I'll make a motion to accept March bid. I'll second it.
And everybody got a chance to see those binges, okay?
And this is only as needed. So last year, Mark got the bid as well. I think we utilized him twice through the whole winter. It's just when we get a really heavy snow in or if somebody got sick or.
Staff reductions or staff isn't here, so it helps out.
So it's just, it's not like we're calling out every snowstorm.
Twice in one week, wasn't it?
We only had two weeks of snow. All right, I need a, Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And then nuisance property updates.
Yeah, I have, we have nothing new going on right now. Tim and I had scheduled Friday to have me come out with Tim Heims to look at some more properties. I got called away at the last minute with a sick, sick person needed to sign their estate planning. So we canceled that. We're upset that Tim's gone this week.
Well, Tim was at, he has a conference. He's attending Thursday, Friday. But Tim and I did go out last Friday to look at properties. We identified ten of them that nuisance notifications were going out to. We addressed, we'll have that information to the council. That's first meeting in December.
And then we picked a date next week for you to come over and go through those with them. Yeah, while we're at it, since part of it, we're still waiting for those, that bond.
We're darn close. We're close.
We are close. John, John had been contacting the MC and we got a, we were told that they'd referred it to the attorney who did the appeal to get that for us. I shared correspondence with Tim where I asked him where we were at with that on, I think it was Friday. I got an email from him and replied back, give us an update on that. We haven't heard that they've given, he's been given his marching orders to get it, so we have somebody doing it. So I'm hoping any day I open my email, we'll have something. That's kinda where we're at.
I was informed by John Dolan, because he's been in contact with me as well, that the cost for this bond would be covered under the city's current claim.
Oh.
So there will not be any, at least as of right now, what John has been told is that there will not be an additional cost to the city for this bond.
That's good.
So that was good news. I was anxious to hear.
Okay.
Tim, I got a question for, or maybe even for Tim on the nuisance property. Somebody asked me about North Franklin Manchester Park Apartments, kinda by the old Casey Cemetery. So we picked up sitting there full of everything. And I believe they said it didn't have plates on it. I, I don't know. I think I've seen it.
If it's not licensed, then it's sitting there with junk and it would be a nuisance. We, we should send them a notice.
Yeah, but if it is dreadful without any violations on the city streets, even though it has stuff in the back end.
But that's what.
Yeah, so we don't.
That is private, okay.
But you should be able to see the plate, run it.
That drawn on North Franklin?
Yeah.
It was sitting sideways. And then it pulled in straight ahead, so it can move.
Don't. I'll just ask you.
Yeah.
Good question.
We got that, that parking code that we, that's all through now.
No, we're still.
We got one more reading.
Oh, one more reading.
Okey-dokey. Any other questions on nuisance properties?
I, I have one.
It's, it's not a public, sorry, that's okay. You can come see him afterwards.
Yeah, after.
If that's okay, yeah, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Okay. I don't want to go anywhere. Yeah. The property is almost across from the library. What's happening with that is really an eyesore. Is there anything we can do?
I don't know what we talked about.
We've talked about this quite a few times. And it is, he classifies it as his second home. It has utilities to it. Because he doesn't rent it out, it doesn't have to go through a rental inspection. The paint is lacking. It needs paint. Look, we don't have an ordinance regarding painting. Windows are sealed. It's, as far as we can tell from the outside, yes, it's, it's not attractive. And it's a long haul, one of our main throwers, but it's just not something that meets the threshold of a nuisance that we could press on.
Just an eyesore.
It is just an eyesore.
Okay. All right, what I thought I'd ask.
Would we be, it's a hard line to, it's a hard line to watch sometimes between eyesore and, it really is.
Well, beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we be able to have a city code about painted houses? I mean, in modern day, almost everything's going vinyl or there's not really a painting issue, but.
You open up a huge piano.
I know we have no staff.
I've seen cities that have done it and I, I, it didn't look pleasant to me, you know?
Thanks, Tim. All right, Flood Coalition Community Outreach Plan meeting is tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, sorry, at six P M. One of the things we will be doing is mailing out an income survey. I presented the council, we can't do anything survey. Again, all it is is how many people are in the household, is your income above or below that threshold? It's anonymous. There is a QR code under so they can do it online. Otherwise, just turn it back into City Hall. We will collate them. It is a requirement for us to do an income survey for any chance for us to apply for a community development law grant. We are looking at studying at least three tributaries going in to town here, trying to find a way that we can increase our flood resiliency, reduce our base flood elevation. That is the biggest challenge we're running to. After two thousand sixteen, when they did a flood study, they used LiDAR as opposed to the topo maps. The topo maps with three-foot base flood elevation or three-foot elevation between lines with LiDAR was eighteen inches. And after they did that study, fifty percent more land was draining this way. So that increased the drainage area, which produced a lot of water coming through. They also changed their flood calculations, runoff calculations, and that increased the amount of water coming through. So that ended up with us having two hundred and thirty-four more parcels included into the flood plain, then two dozen parcels in the floodway. We need to figure out a way to, to address this because those are properties that are affordable. You cannot build property like that today for the cost they are. So for us to get started, we're gonna do the study. So tomorrow night, at this meeting, we will talk about what we're doing with the Iowa Flood Center, the Iowa Flood Coalition, and saving Manchester and our steps as we look to do some flood resiliency.
And that's at the community center, correct?
That is at the community center, yes.
Well, see y'all there. Okay, Sam, you wanna go first?
So working on getting kind of product holdouts, getting stuff through with the DOT. Obviously, final change order tonight. Right now, we're kinda currently on track for the next meeting, November twenty-fifth. I had some discussions with Tim and Aaron last week. Kinda on track for November twenty-fifth to accept the project and confirm the DOT. So it's gonna be a little bit goofy. So the council, if everything goes kind of accordingly on November twenty-fifth, you would accept the project, but then that would basically queue the DOT to start reviewing the project documents. And the city would not pay, make that final payment of retainage until after the DOT completes their audit review. So that final retainage might not get paid out for a month or two or three, depending on how long it takes the DOT to get through their stuff before that. So that final retainage might not get paid out for a month, or two, or three, depending on how long it takes the DOT to get through their stuff before that final retainage is paid, so normally, it's accepted and paid all in one. Meaning, but this will be, the city will accept the project, and then that'll queue the DOT to start their review, and then down the road, to get the okay from the DOT, um, we'll pay the contractor that retainage. So with the acceptance of the project, we're also working on kinda final assessment items, um, so. Talking with Dorsey a little bit back and forth, it sounds like the city could either, um, kinda do their levy for the assessments either on the November twenty-fifth meeting or the December ninth meeting, so. That's a couple things we gotta kinda get ironed out, yeah, um, so if we don't have that timeline for the November twenty-fifth meeting, we could have, uh, uh, final assessments on the December ninth meeting. Yes, Tim, or anything that you guys wanna add regarding that? Okay. Um, Jack, say, if there does have any questions for me?
Do we have to accept the project prior, or does that have anything to do with the assessments?
We have to accept the project before we've done, limited assessments.
I guess, also remind you too, so, unfortunately, with the DOT project, there is no two-year maintenance bond on this project, so once it's accepted, it's, it's done, but it's. It's also have to get, I mean, done before the DOT and get everything closed out, so like I said, there is no two-year maintenance bond on this, unfortunately, but although I can say a local project, you have that with DOTs. That's, you know. So.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
All right, uh, Commerce Board at this point is substantially complete, uh, they finished, but the reins we got last week to kinda make things a little difficult to get it back filled, that has been backfilled, and Vern was in today, and did see the portions. Of the project basically from Burnington Road into the mouth of the cul-de-sac up to the point where there's gonna be hopefully some additional work taking place here in the, in the near future. Um, so we'll be working to get with city staff to go through and do a punchless walkthrough out there, um, getting the last couple items addressed out there before. Next contractor gets out there and we start having a finger point contest about who is responsible for what condition out there. Um, so as I mentioned earlier, that would mean then, we'll go through that punch list, get that done, we'll do a, as Sam had done for these Main Street project, go through and confirm project quantities. Do a final change order and pay application, and then we'll still hold the retainage until acceptance of the project, and then it'll be released thirty days after, so there will be. Two additional pay applications, and at this point, the dollar amounts of those are gonna be considerably minimal compared to the last couple we've had because of, uh, uh, sculpting improvements taking place. And, um, we've got notice of, uh, interest had been filed, uh, uh, one of the voice for apartment C I P plan, uh, items was, uh, generators for lift stations, so I have filed. Uh, through EMC grants for notice of interest to potentially get funding through the disaster, uh, the disaster qualifications that are hazard mitigation grant, uh, as part of that project, so we'll wait to hear back, anything back on that.
So it's ready to kick off with, like, we have A one to decide, you know, she's very well.
She's ready.
Yep.
All right.
As a matter of fact, I think, you know, we'll be looking at site plans, putting some information soon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand that, that the property owners develop, you know, the purchaser, owner, I think are getting closer on that process now.
And then there's three other parcels that could be.
Well, if, if anyone's taking two of them.
They are taking two.
Yes.
There would be one additional. That has not been transferred ownership out of MBI at this time, there'd be one additional one.
Any other questions for Jason? All right, thank you, all right, uh, Jim, anybody else?
I have nothing else.
All right, Tim?
Um, I have been going to a number of meetings to talk to people regarding childcare, I sit on the free childcare board in Manchester. Couple of you attended a meeting where we talked about some of the concerns and issues we're, we're facing, and I appreciate your support on that task force, is working, get started. With the meeting Friday morning, starting at seven A M, uh, so, uh, we've got people looking at this for six months, we'll be working on ways to try to make, uh, childcare affordable and sustainable in Manchester. Oh, let me right here. I can't get too far away from my conference.
Is that all?
Uh, just received notice today that, uh, we have a local industry that has helped us, the Dog Park Committee, as far as securing, uh, fencing. At a much lower price than what we were looking at anticipating, so city council will be seeing that at the next council meeting for approval, initially, we were estimating about forty thousand dollars for fencing. Uh, looks like, uh, after the negotiations, we'll be coming closer to twenty thousand.
That's good.
So, and the company concluded in this fall, yeah.
That committee hasn't really, really gone to town, and they've been very creative with everything they've done, so kudos to them. Anything else, Tim?
That's it.
Okay, Aaron?
Nothing.
Okay, Brian?
Nothing.
Linda?
Nothing.
Marion?
Nothing.
Joe?
Happy Veterans Day, all veterans, you know, even though it's late, but thanks for everything you guys do. You know, I'm a service member of the mother.
Bill?
Nothing.
Okay, you put words out of my mouth, we did our, um, Free Day of Dentistry for all of our veterans last Friday, and it was another huge success, so, um. Thank you, Brian and Joe, for your service, and also the Chief Davis, and Tim as well, and am I missing anybody else that served here? Um, thank you very much for your service, um, we have you to thank for our freedoms that we get to do what we do here today. So, um, with that said, do you have any questions, Emily?
Um. I guess, I was interested in your nice neighbor award, is that like something that you guys do every month, or like, how is it being done?
I wish we did it every month, that'd be really nice, um, Mayor Mills actually started that many, many years ago. And, um, we've been doing our Year of Kindness, uh, last year, and we're doing our Season of Kindness now. And one of those things is about, you know, our neighbors getting out and talking, social media has taken us away from talking one-on-one, but when people do nice things, it's nice to recognize them, and it's, hopefully it spreads it, and it gets contagious, and more and more do that, so. Um, yeah, so that was, I think that's the second one that we've had since we started it back up again, so, um, so we'd like to see more, so I encourage everybody to do that. Um, yes.
It's a note too, that, um, we have some Delaware students that are out helping with some yard work.
Yeah.
This week.
Yes, they are, um, with this, uh, Jamie Smith reached out to us from the, um, West Delaware Student Council, and this is National Kindness Week. And so they are helping area residents who either, maybe they're not physically able to, or they don't have the tools to do it, or they just, they just need help. Um, getting ready for winter, they're raking leaves and, um, helping move stuff in their yards and so forth, and, uh, we weren't really getting any, um. Traction, and then all of a sudden, I got to talk to a lady, and she knows a lot of people at her church, and she got on the phone, and so, and then it's been K M C H, thank you for getting it on the radio for us, so it's. Had a lot of people sign up now, so they'll be doing that through Friday, and it's first come, first served, and they're trying to get everybody's, but weather's gonna be predictive of it as well, I'm afraid this week.
And then just one other note, leaf pickup will continue, uh, this week and the next week for, um, on the fun regular schedule. Uh, if it snows, we will be done, so if it snows, then that's the cutoff word, but they will go this weekend next.
I'm just gonna mention that, I talked to Jason at the brush dump today, so that there, there's just too much left, I think your staff knows, like, I think we're gonna go another couple weeks.
So anyway.
Much thanks to the city staff for.
Yeah.
All the work they put in, I mean, like, they come out four times today, we're not moving brush, so.
Yeah, keep that pile pushed up, because it does get clogged.
Yeah. So, okay, with that said, I'll take a motion from Brian, a second from Linda, that we are adjourned, and we are adjourned, have a wonderful week, everybody.